I will call the Sunset Empire Transportation District Board of Commissioners. Meeting to order for Thursday, April 27th at 9:00 a.m. Thank everybody for being here today. We're in session. To pledge your allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to call please? Commissioner Busman?
Here.
Commissioner McDonald?
Here.
Commissioner Nino?
Here.
Commissioner Legria?
Here.
Commissioner Withers?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Merle? Excuse, excuse. Changes to the agenda. I would like to make one change. To the agenda, a report by Karen Chriswell from ODOT. I had come out to know that we were having some many issues. They've done an investigation partly. And Karen will be reporting on what they have done so far. She's kind of in a meeting, so we're going to work around a 10:00 a.m. Spot for her kind of floor. John and Sue. Any other? Director Jimmy?
That's the only line, just being flexible for Karen.
A motion to approve the change of the agenda?
Almost so.
In a second. Thank you Rebecca. Public comment. Nothing? Is there anybody on our Zoom call that would like to make a public comment? See? Go ahead, John.
Thank you. Good morning Commissioners, my name is John Driesen. I live in St. Helens, Oregon. I'm the Transit Director for Columbia County Rider. You're a small neighborhood to the east. I am here this morning really just to voice my support and respect for Jeff and his team here. During my tenure certainly as Columbia County Rider, Jeff in particular, many of his team members have been extremely supportive of us during some very difficult times. And it seemed really reasonable to make myself available down here to do the same. I think, well, I'm certainly not an official delegate of the Nwada group. I think it's fair to say that they would echo all of the positive thoughts and feelings that I should have about Jeff and the team. Obviously Sunset Empire is a valuable asset to Clatsop County, but it's really a valuable asset to the entire northwest of Oregon, if not the entire state. I just appreciate you guys being here and doing everything you can to make sure that Sunset Empire continues moving forward.
There is nobody on President Claus, so we'll go ahead to approve our board minutes.
Then Chairman, I move that we approve.
Second, Rebecca seconds, is there any discussion?
What? There's no, no, okay, medication, okay. I'm saving it concentrated here.
Thank you.
Seeing no discussion, Mary, would you do a roll call though please? Commissioner Busman? Yes. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Nino?
Yes.
Commissioner Legria?
Yes.
Commissioner Withers?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to financials.
Do you have Kelly here?
Good morning.
Morning Kelly.
Do you have a can?
We should have a motion so we can discuss.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, all right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm assuming treasury is one of the main reasons for the meeting, so should we delay this discussion on treasury? Should we come back to her or you have?
You know, I think we can do this and then listen to the report.
Okay.
Tracy, did you want this motion?
So moved that way.
Diana was second.
Financials for the month of?
Uh, March. March.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Diana seconded it. I do have a question. Everybody knows that we're having financial issues. And I would just like to know, I found out about it on the 14th of this month. And when did Sunset, when did you guys actually notice that we were getting really open funds?
We noticed earlier this month, you know, we've been tracking it, watching it, and we were hopeful that we would be able to get through it, but that didn't come through.
Diana, did you have some? Oh, I'm sorry, put it.
On page 10, it says here, okay, 5,000 grants for 84. That amount of money was in the previous packet. So has this money been registered twice, the 84,000 plus? Based, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, 10.
Which item?
Grants under revenue 5,000, that was in the previous packet.
No, it should be.
So is that counted twice?
No, it's not counted twice, I just didn't change that number.
The question also is where, when we receive money from a grant, is there a separate category that we know we've received it or not? Or it just goes, where does it go?
On page 11, it's under our revenues.
Okay. And so, this is, so it's cash, cash, it's not like we're going to get money, it's cash?
It's reimbursement from previously spent funds.
Okay. Something on, okay, on the balance sheet, page 14. Okay. I did this a couple of times, but I'll tell you what I found. For your assets, you have 140,000 plus. You minus the liabilities, 40,000 plus. So your net asset should be 94,534 dollars and 81 cents. And on the balance sheet, it says 94,476 dollars and 92 cents. You see what I'm saying?
I see. Please you. The balance sheet is off just a little bit. It's something within the system that I'm working with AccuFund. I ran into this problem before with them. And so I'm working on getting that fixed.
Okay. So a bigger question is this. So the fund balance is 19,532.55. And that, in parentheses, that has been the same figure, this is as far as the research I've done, from August 2022 to January 2023. So what does that mean? So those are the months rather than the packet?
Right.
And as I said, I just have so much room in my house to spread everything. That's what I did.
I'm wondering if that doesn't have to do with? What page are you on?
So 14 on the balance sheet.
And what are you referring to?
The fund balance, 3,000 fund balance underneath total.
What's the item number?
3,000.
Oh, well, I see.
No, I'm not an accountant. But so I did research. And so on, one piece of research that I did, it said, this is the number that we should be looking at. So what does it all mean? And why hasn't, what does it all mean, same number?
I'm not sure why that number hasn't changed. I know that there's some, and I'm still working with the auditor, there were some beginning balances that weren't input correctly when we changed the status. And so I'm still working on getting those adjusted correctly. And so there will be, there will be some changes within things when that's all finalized.
Well, is it a plus or a minus change? So that's a long time, so I don't, so I'm a little concerned with that. We'll leave it at that. Then the other thing I did was, still on your balance sheet, under Assets 1030, the LGIP, which means, local government investment pool, which is a compilation of what money?
That is our taxes.
Because this, it fluctuates wildly.
It does.
So that, is there some way that we can be prepared? So I did from July 2022 to February 2023. So July, the July starts out 14,000 plus, then 88,000, 7,000, 83,000. And in December, 615,000, November, 684,000. And then wow, 400,000 less than the previous month. And then 100 to 1,000. Now, there's been the figures mentioned about 400,000, that's in the year. And is there any way to break this out? That we are not, we can control our expenses versus what we're getting? And I, so what do you mean by taxes? I thought that was a separate thing from property taxes, the mass something or other taxes.
It's our property taxes that go into that account. So we get like big deposits in November and December as everybody pays their property taxes.
Okay.
And then throughout the years, we have smaller deposits as smaller amounts are being paid. So we don't have any control over how much goes into that account or when, as far as property taxes go. It's when the county receives it and then they distribute it to us.
So the bulk of it comes in between October and when we all get our statements and December. That's why you see those.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So the suggestion, and this is my fault, that that's a number we should look at every month. And if it, when it drops down to, you know, a huge amount of money, then we have to adjust the expenses somewhere. Is that a possibility?
Yeah, I mean, we use that money throughout the year. You know, that's what we use for local match. And between that and timber dollar, that's what we use for local match on all the grants. We have the operating grants, especially if it's a 50%. So that's what we should be paying all the bills with at this point. And then we get reimbursed at the end of each quarter.
So then when we do the yearly budget, we should take this into account because that's a huge fluctuation. And you maybe like to prorate your expenses, so on the books. Then when you have to pay it, you've just left, you've accumulated, say 100, well, this is a lot, $100 a month. And then when, say fuel is due or payroll is due. And that's the other question I had. So the, the payroll account, the Lewis and Clark, that's a restricted payroll account?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And the general fund obviously is not. And then you have checking. And what, what it, where is, what money goes into that one? You have the general checking bank, it's on page four, it's under assets. The first three.
General checking is just our general, it's our regular account that we run all of our AP out of. It's the account that all of our reimbursements go into. It's every, all of our deposits, basic deposits go into that one.
So what, but what money is it? Where does it come from?
Reimbursements from ODOT.
All the fairs.
All the fairs, all the.
Mr. Lee, yes.
And the other thing since, I don't know how long, okay. I found in May of 2022, a breakdown of, I guess we were doing the budget. Must have been doing the budget. So it's broken down into general fund, special transportation, special transportation fund and capital reserve fund. Would that be able to be included into our monthly packet? How much we've used of it? How much has not, has not come? You know, we've, say, one, that we've received the grant. Two, how much it is. And three, the approximate time period it comes. Four, that when it comes, the total amount is there. And what we've used of it. So we can just pick up the sheet and go, oh my, okay.
Give whatever the mark is.
And then the other thing is, there's no credit card in our packet.
It wasn't done yet, it's still left.
Okay. This is a little disconcerting, and I don't want, I'll just say this. So it's $200,000 for a credit card expense this month, if I remember correctly.
No.
Well.
No, we don't have that authority.
For the year. For the year.
Oh, that's.
For the year.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Okay, I understand, okay, I think I've said enough.
Diana?
Thank you. So my first question is, we hear often that there are discrepancies because of the change in the software. When did we switch software for our account?
2020? I started in January 21. I just started here. So which software was that? Do you remember the name? That we were using prior?
QuickBooks. QuickBooks. And then which month did we switch to our current software?
July of 2020, I believe.
It was at the beginning of that fiscal year.
And we still have issues because of that system?
We do still have issues. AccuFund is not the most friendly system to start with. When it was, when it was implemented, there was things that weren't done correctly, that weren't caught. And so as we've gone through audit, it's being caught. And then there's different glitches in it that I've found throughout. Things not posting correctly, things posting twice. It's a system I've never used before, so it's not a system that I'm familiar with to be able to quickly fix and find. AccuFund support isn't always the greatest. So it's kind of been a fight. Unfortunately, looking to get new software is super expensive.
Did you receive any training to use AccuFund?
Very minimal training from AccuFund.
Is there training available for AccuFund? Are there courses?
Well, there is training available, but it's a, there's not a lot there. I reach out quite regularly. I pop onto their trainings that they do have. I use their customer, you know, their support that they have and different ways to be able to use their system. In a couple of the conferences that I've been to, other people that have had their system have not liked it. It's not, it's not been a very good system.
So.
And I see they don't attend the SDAO conferences anymore.
Why did we choose AccuFund?
Tracy, at that time, had gone out for RFP, reissueing RFP. And she selected three vendors. And she made the evaluation of the three. She made the recommendation of.
And who, who was it?
Tracy, our previous finance officer.
Previous finance officer. So then it's been.
The one that we wanted was a transit specific one. But it was exorbitantly expensive. And then, so there was other two that were fairly comparable. But she, she made the recommendation for.
Would there be any support for this on behalf of SDAO if we wanted to really understand how to manage AccuFund? If that's the system?
SDAO wouldn't do that, they don't, they don't deal with the accounting software. Kind of somebody that was down it, tell them what helped them now when they lost their finance officer. Did not speak highly of AccuFund also.
So yeah, so it's been two and a half years that we're still dealing with issues. And that's, that's very, very concerning. So when we made the budget for the current year that we're in, 2020 to 2023, we used that, that was already on AccuFund. But that, that always.
Everything goes into AccuFund for the budget. We don't use AccuFund to budget.
What do we use to budget?
The state forms that you get in the budget.
Is that Excel spreadsheet?
It's an Excel spreadsheet.
It's an Excel spreadsheet. All right.
And then once we have the budget established, then Kelly goes through and breaks it down for each month based on past history. You know, like if, you know, the months that we, we don't receive grant reimbursements every month, we must be repeated or received on every quarter. So she'll choose the appropriate, or try to choose the appropriate quarter and we'll get that budget for.
I see.
And same with the expenses, you know, if we see some transit things.
So then on the packet, page 10, the revenue, item 4021, Medicaid fare. So our revenues for the month were $0. But then we were budgeted for that monthly for 5,000. And that changes like the budget, I think, I guess, what you're explaining. So January 5,000, for February, we had 7,500,000. For March, 5,000. And now it's two months in a row that we don't receive any fares from Medicaid. Why is that?
We've been short-staffed at Ops. And so getting the billing out until a month has been late. I know we did just receive a check from Tillamook for about $10,000.
For like a few months or something?
Yes.
Wow, okay. I had a similar question to Pam, and I didn't quite understand what the item 5,000 under revenue is, grants. That item is not even on the spreadsheet. So.
That was a mistake.
Mistake.
That was on the previous month's board packet. And she didn't change it to update it to the March number.
So the total amount, that amount, so the 5,000 grants is our grant reimbursements that we receive. So if you look at page 11, it numbers 5201 through 5306.
So it'd be 62,000 plus the 26,000 plus the 157,000.
And then.
Updating hotline when I was updating, right?
I'm sorry, what was the other number, 62,000 and what?
62,206, 26,302, and 157,187.
Page 11, under months to be actual.
Just in a minute, I'll get you into one.
And 100, what?
157,187.
Total grants received were 245,695 dollars for March.
What was it, Jeff?
245,695.
Then on, I answered that one. Okay, if we move on to page 11, then those, those grants, like the 52, all the way, 5201, 5202, 5203, 5301, 5302, 5304, 5306.
Yep.
So you just said, those are like the grants that we receive, mainly from ODOT, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So then those, yeah, those variations, those items vary a lot from month to month. On the budget is because, what you're explaining, like because of the quarterly or all of that. But they have consistently been on deficit for the past, I went back four months, but I don't know, Pam probably looks more months. So what is going on with our grants and ODOT? Is that what we're gonna hear later on with the report? Like, how can we possibly be months just not receiving any grant money?
The only grant that's outstanding right now is that 138,000. Take more than that, isn't it? Take 150 some thousand. That was from the quarter ending in December.
And that's the only one that we're pending?
So the, the grant monies that you see there, the income is reimbursement from previous, the previous quarter. So it's, we have to spend it to get it. And we have a match amount on most of those. So you, so it's not, if we spent $100,000, we're not necessarily going to get $100,000 reimbursement. And we, so we, I have to wait until, so like a quarter ended, say, December 31st. I have to wait until everything's in from that quarter. All of the expenses are in and, and everything. And then I submit my, you know, put all my reports together and submit them to Jeff, and Jeff reviews them, and then they go on to ODOT. ODOT reviews them and then processes the payment. So it's not a quick process.
And the, in that order, she talked about the reports. Those are what we call periodic reports. And we have to submit those before we receive the reimbursement. And we've got 45 days in order to get those in. So quarter ended in March, so we technically have until May 15th to get that report in. Try to do it sooner if we can, you know, Kelly was on vacation, so she worked on it. But we also have to wait, you know, the first month of the new quarter to make sure that we've gotten all the billings and all the, you know, bills that we've got that we have to pay out for that previous quarter, including in the reimbursement request.
Okay, thank you. Page 12. I just wanted to say outstanding figure for that, I'm sorry.
The budget was 138, but the reimbursement request was 152?
That's good enough.
That's all right.
Thank you.
152.
So on page 12, first item under expenses, wages, 6012. So when we. 6010. I'm sorry. So then, when I went, I went back to see our budget, the budget that we made last year for this, for this year, this fiscal year. And then we did budget close to $3 million for, for all of our wages. wages and taxes and benefits. And then from what I see here, what we've spent so far this year doesn't even come close to what we budgeted. So my question is, did we budget incorrectly? Did we say, did we think that we had, because this is, um, well, the public can't see it, my fellow can't see it. But from uh, the budget that we made, on salaries and wages, the proposed by budget officer was two million dollars, one hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one. Payroll expenses, three hundred thirty-three thousand and six hundred dollars. Employee benefits, six hundred twenty-three thousand and sixty-six dollars for a total personal services amount of three million dollars, eighty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven. That's plenty of money for us to pay our employees and the, the benefits. Like, we shouldn't be lacking at all. So how come we are now aching for money to pay our staff when the year-to-date actual on page twelve of this current packet is only a million dollars, seven hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-nine? And then it says that the variance is a hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars with eighty-nine cents. How can we be aching when we're not even half, like, we're close to just halfway of what was budgeted?
No, we're beyond halfway.
Okay, we're beyond halfway, but we're not even close to three million dollars. So how come we're, we're on deficit?
We still got through June. The end of the fiscal year is in June. Then we're right, right now, we're, it, it just wages, we're over wages by a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Half of that is, no, actually, I got that, not half, but a substantial part is we're realizing more overtime than we previously had.
But then this variance is from, from what was budgeted for the year?
No, that's for what's.
Year-to-date.
Year-to-date.
So through March. That's, on that top line, that year-to-date budget of one million, six hundred nine thousand, four hundred dollars, that's year-to-date from July first to the end of March.
Okay, and then what is the variance in? Are we in deficit? Are we in the red?
We're over, we're over budget.
We're over budget?
Yeah, by a hundred and eight thousand, a hundred, almost a hundred and eight thousand.
But then if we, if this went July to March, four I have to count the expansion, eight months. So in eight months, and we only have four months left. In eight months, we spent a million and seven hundred. We're not gonna spend another million three hundred thousand in four months. So why are we in the red? Why did we even consider suspending?
For that time period.
So.
June first through the end of March.
So probably it would be more than three million dollars, right, at the time that we end our fiscal year?
For total personnel services, you add it, yes, a fifty.
So it's because of the overtime?
Overtime is a big factor.
Alrighty.
Yeah, how many positions are we still short, Jeff? Five, I think. Okay. So there's five people that were budgeted previously that aren't there. Actually, four, we're now four physicians. Okay, we're budgeted for fifty FTE and we're currently at forty-six.
So wages have gone up?
Wages have gone up, yes.
And on page fourteen, uh, the consolidated balance sheet. So Pam already brought this up, but then on under assets at the top, item one zero three zero, LGIP General Fund. So then for this year, we only have thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars plus change, compared to last year, three hundred fifty-two thousand, eight hundred fifteen-sixty-seven. Uh, please explain again, why, why the huge difference?
We've stretched down our income faster this year. We've had to use the property taxes for.
Didn't we receive more cares and federal funding last year than this year?
That, that wouldn't.
That wouldn't.
That would effectively only be that key.
Okay.
Just property taxes going in. The cares and the early grants go into the checking account.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Which we have in the past. If we get too much in Lewis and Clark Bank, we'll ship some of it out to LGIP, because we don't wanna have more than two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
And GL, LGIP is from taxes? It's from what? Uh, where, where is this from money? Property taxes?
And timber harvest goes in there.
And what?
Timber harvest money, timber revenue.
Right.
I think we're having more than that.
So Jeff, that's what's in that account now, not the total puts and in that account.
That was what was in that account.
Yeah, okay, there's.
Oh, I see.
I think that's where maybe it's a little confusing.
So this is what is currently, like, how much we owe, how much we have, how much, like, right now as of three thirty-one, March thirty-first?
Yeah.
Okay, um. And on page eighteen, page eighteen, check this thing. Uh, check number two-two-four-one-nine, this is for SDIS invoices. Uh, so these are invoices. How many did we pay?
Sorry, what page are you on?
Uh, page eighteen. Check number two-two-four-one-nine. And this was for SDIS, which is our insurance services. And we paid close to sixty thousand. Uh, how many invoices were those?
So that's medical insurance.
Mm-hmm.
And then workers comp.
For what time period?
That was for um February is medical. And then that quarter is workers comp.
And how often do we pay? Quarterly, monthly?
Comp is quarterly, um, medical is monthly.
So that forty-nine thousand, that's, that's monthly number, right?
Okay, and then I have to answer this one. Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you. Thank you, you. Uh, Charles?
Rebecca, just for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rebecca.
Okay, thank you. Um, did Jeff and uh Kelly some of my concerns, uh, you know, I'm concerned about AccuFund being, not being effective. And I am concerned about the lag time for the answers to the questions that we've had about financials. Um, I want, I think we need to know what contributed to the financial issues that we're in right now. Um, I'd like to know how we can prevent this in the future and, uh, and anticipate these reductions as before it becomes critical, as we've seen in this last month. Um, I'm wondering if we need a different computing um software, even if it is more expensive. Um, I, I agree with much, I appreciate Deanna, uh, your questions initially about these similar um concerns about training, if we need more training. Um, and um how can we evaluate without the correct figures? You know, it's kind of leaving us flat-footed, you know, as a board. And I think that maybe what, this is gonna take a bit of time, but we need to work together on this so that maybe there could be some, some more work together with the board so that we, we can track these things along with you then. Thank you.
Charles?
Uh, thank you, Matt. I'm a big picture kind of guy. I, I, I tend to think, what are we doing to fix this board? Uh, I'm not a real numbers guy. My wife, though, she's a retired CPA. She managed thirty-five million dollars, not, not profit in Virginia. She looked it over and didn't see anything that looked crazy. Uh, she's, she's really puzzled that, she said, this often happens with them. Waiting on funding from the state or from the federal government and it doesn't get there in time. So then you're in a crisis of paying payroll. I, I'll go back again and say, we need to establish a relationship with the bank that can give us emergency loans when we need them. Because she said they would invariably have to take emergency loans out to, to pay payroll, pay expenses. And if Lewis and Clark doesn't meet that bill, we need to find someone who does. Uh, because she, like I said, she's a retired CPA CFO for quite a size of a nonprofit. She wanted to stress in this meeting that you can't look at these numbers like, like breadmeyer or, or like uh someone less. We, we're, we're not a profit, we don't sell a product, we don't have a profit, profit margin. But we do run into costs involved regarding payroll and, and just billables, spendables. So when we can do this, I, I feel positive we do, because I'm a big picture kind of guy. I think we need to look somewhere for, if we get to this body and we need to go to the institution and tell them we, we have emergency loans, we have assets. I mean, we, we, so to get rejected in the assets we own, to me, is ridiculous. So uh, I would say, I think we will fix this, I'm confident in our staff, I'm confident in Jeff, Tracy, I'm not Tracy, Tracy. Okay, but uh, I, I just think we need that, we need to do that. Because she, she, she gave an example that I think it was during the uh, just right after the crash of the housing crash in two thousand eight. All the federal funding just stopped. And they, they had a hundred fifty employees and all of a sudden they didn't have money to pay payroll. But they had a relationship with the bank, they gave emergency funding based on the fact that they weren't gonna get this funding, but they needed it. They need to write checks to, to people, you know, that weekend, so. I, I, I don't really think the fairytale's happened, I just think we need to come up with a legitimate institution that understands that we, we occasionally gonna need emergency funding until we get our funding from state.
You'll hear from Karen there in just a couple of minutes and on what they've found so far. And then I'll, I'll be reporting out after Karen talks, I'll be reporting out my conversations with Lincoln. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. So I know that last, last year in February twenty twenty-two, we did a supplemental budget and we took our contingency money and put in Sue so that we could use. We've already used our contingency money this year, from what I understand, but we never did a supplemental budget to use them.
We've used our cash, that's correct. We haven't pulled from the contingency that there's no cash flow, so our problem is cash flow.
And then one request I would have moving forward in other committees that I serve on other places, we have um more of a verbal report than just written. And I think if Kelly could give us a basic verbal report on monies we've received, monies that are going out, the grants that we've gotten in, so that we also know if we're lagging behind on some grants. And I really think a verbal report would help us a lot.
Often I see, I'll come on other board and they give us a dashboard type look where it says, okay, this is where we are, this is where we're short. I'm okay, my, my wife's CPA, she does all that sort of thing. But to me, I, I can see it, because uh, you know, just something thick on cash flow and stuff like that. And, and you can see it, you know, and, and we get one, another board at all gives us what I call a dashboard. It's, it gives us a graph of all the, all the indices that we should be worried about. I like to see something like that.
So maybe like how much of each brand was awarded? How much we've already received?
How much of?
And how much we still have left on each, each of the grants?
What we've used out of, because some of those grants are specific.
Yeah, for specific programs. I like that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we wanna wait and approve the financials after we hear from Karen, Karen, or Karen is on now?
Oh.
I'd just like, um.
I think I'd like.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, so we've got the motion, we've got the second, but we're gonna listen to Karen's report. Did you have anything first?
I'd just like to, you know, I mentioned about the fund balance and uh if what I read is true, how are we supposed to judge what is happening? So if you can do it manually, something, and what is it that we need to see that goes boom? Because there's so many figures, short period of time that uh, we can correct it before it gets out of hand. And I didn't mention the last month that your expenditures were over your revenue. And so um you leave the board when you just come in and say, we're closing the next day. How to prevent that?
Okay, shall we go to Karen?
Karen, are you available? No, so this is Karen, uh, she's the ODOT Home and Transportation Division Administrator.
Uh, good morning, folks. Good morning, Chair. First, I just wanna thank the Chair for engaging with us and inviting me into this, um, into your meeting this morning. The other thing that I wanna say right out of the gate is just to start by acknowledging the importance of Sunset Empire and this, and the critical services that you provide to your community. That's what this is all about, being able to provide those um critical services that the community relies on. Um, ODOT has a role both as a technical advisor to transit agencies and in providing compliance oversight um to providers that are recipients of ODOT funding. Our job is to help transit agencies make sure that they expend funds in a manner that's consistent with relevant regulations. Um, I have to share that we really had no indication based on the quarterly reports submitted to us by the district that something was wrong until we received a call from your board chair last week and a message from uh your director. Um, the quarterly reports that we receive included, include information um about revenues, expenditures, profit-loss amounts expended against grant agreements and balances remaining. So those are the kinds of things that we review and track on on a quarterly basis. So uh, once we had some indication, what we did is um, we've been in close contact with your board chair and your director in responses to the financial concerns that were daylighted at your meeting last week. Um, and with their cooperation, our staff have been uh onsite to retrieve and analyze relevant financial records such as bank statements, your adopted budget, budget reports to the board, related financial policies and so forth. However, we were not able to obtain any financial reports from your financial accounting software, uh, which leaves us with um a big gap in information. But we have completed a preliminary review in the intervening uh few days of the information that we did retain. What we found at a high level, given what we've found to date, we are concerned about whether state and federal funds are being expended in a manner that is substantially compliant with our existing agreements and with regulations. Um, there was a mention of um contingency stiff formula funds that might be have made available at the last meeting. Um, our, our subsequent research has indicated that ODOT has dispersed all of the state STIF formula funds that are due to Sunset Empire for this biennium. Um, our next steps are, we are already coordinating with ODOT audits and ODOT's third-party compliance reviewer to determine what an appropriate. to determine what an appropriate scope of a detailed financial audit, uh, would look like with the goal of conducting that audit as soon as possible. Uh, it could also coincide with, uh, your already scheduled compliance, onsite compliance review. It's just scheduled, um, to occur May fifteenth and sixteenth. So while we have distributed all of the stiff formula funds that are due to the district, we are currently withholding reimbursable expenditure reimbursement requests until we can better determine how funds have been expended and the appropriateness of the, uh, most recent, uh, reimbursement request. Uh, once we get the results of the audit, um, it will indicate, uh, both to, to you and to us what additional, um, actions may need to be taken, uh, which could impact, um, whether we enter into new agreements with the district or more likely the conditions of those future agreements. Um, I think I just want to reemphasize again that we're here to assist you in getting your, a, a stronger understanding of your current financial position and then identifying next steps within the scope of our role with the dual goals of supporting you in making sure you're able to continue providing a critical public service, but it also must be fiscally responsible and consistent with state and federal regulations. So that's where we're at currently from, uh, from my seat and I'm happy to address any questions.
Go ahead, Rebecca. You've got your card up just before.
Okay. What I'm hearing Karen i- is that, you know, we're, that, uh, ODOT audits, this is something that we're, can you give us a timeline on when we can work, work together on that?
I don't yet have a timeline. We're in the process of getting a meeting scheduled. We've already had preliminary conversations with ODOT audits. Um, and we're getting a meeting scheduled with them and our third-party reviewer as, as soon as possible. Uh, my, my hope really would be to have it either as part of that May onsite compliance review or to start to have it completed sooner. Um, but we are going to need and they will need, uh, reports from your financial system. So being able to draw those reports will be really important and we have not been able to receive those to date. So some of it is a bit dependent on what the district is able to provide to the, to the auditors.
And Karen, just so you know, um, Kelly is back from vacation. She brought me some of the stuff yesterday. I'm going to forward that to Drew today.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Pamela, did you have anything?
Well, I, I don't quite understand what is the, well, I guess your audit will show this, the deficiencies in reporting expenditures. Is that what it amounts to?
Well, I, I think what we're seeing right now is we're seeing things like discrepancies between revenue actuals that were reported in one fiscal year and then in a subsequent fiscal year, the previous fiscal year's actual revenue actuals are different. So we're seeing a discrepancy like that. We're seeing some discrepancies in the budget reports that have gone to the, to the board versus reports that came to ODOT for the same period of time. And then we're also seeing some discrepancies between, um, bank statements and reports to ODOT. So those are a few of the things that we're seeing that were, that raise, raise yellow flags and that have caused us to want to engage an auditor to look more deeply into, into what's going on and help get to the root of it and see how we can help the district to, um, address those issues.
Is it possible, I read that you give quarterly reports, that the board gets the quarterly reports? And two, is there, what do we do now? Are the, is there money to pay employees next week?
So I think both of those questions are questions for your director. They, your director and staff provide the quarterly reports to us. So it would be a, that would be a question for him. Uh, and it would also be a question for him about, um, your ability to continue service. We don't know that. That's not our role.
Well, would you, um, be able to like back a loan and turn, not back loan, but, uh,
No, we're not able to do that. That is not something we provide.
Okay, thank you.
Deanna?
Thank you, Karen, for all of your, uh, your report and your information. So we are scheduled to work on our budget for the next fiscal year in a couple of weeks. But then from what you're saying, there may be a possibility that ODOT may not award certain things or less, or like you will revise some of the agreements that we have with you. So how soon will we have the information back from ODOT on our future, you know, relationship or agreements? Are we going to have it before we meet for the budget or like how can we navigate our budget meeting?
The commitment that I can make to you is we're going to do everything we can to expedite getting the audit completed, getting the results of that. That will help inform, uh, conditions we would, might have in a grant agreement. So, um, if there are findings in the audit, there would also be corrective actions that would be identified. So some of that would also identify what is the, what is the needed correction, corrective action? What is the schedule? And then that is something that we would work with the district on, uh, the timing of that. So what we have, uh, in front of us for consideration right now, our transportation commission is considering a discretionary, uh, grant award for the district, uh, coming up at their May meeting. As it currently stands, uh, we just added a note, uh, we have not, um, pulled back that recommendation on that grant award, but we have added a note stating that, you know, there could be, we will not enter into an agreement until we understand the results of the audit and, um, are able to identify what conditions we, uh, additional conditions we might need over our boilerplate language. There may not be any. Um, we just don't know that. So that, uh, we'll have information in May about that. In May, the commission also has the district's, uh, STIF formula fund plan, which is your plan for your twenty-three, twenty-five, um, stiff formula funds. We haven't changed anything about that, um, submittal on that recommendation, uh, to the commission. And so, um, so that is going forward as well. I, I think that's the most that I can, uh, the best that I can do in answering your question. I'm not sure the timing of your, uh, budget meetings, but you, you may be in a space where it would be wise to have, consider some contingencies. You know, if this grant comes through or if it doesn't come through, for example. But we will know more at the commission meeting in May about how they gavel down on that.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Arla's in the room. So if there's a diff, additional questions for her, I'm sure she can, she can handle those. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, did you want to do something before we go on to pass the financials or?
We can grab a financial.
Okay, anything else on the financials? Would you like to do a roll call? Okay. Mr. Busman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Nino?
Yes.
Mr. Legriat?
Yes.
Mr. Ruzer?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Next.
Passes. Thank you. And continue financial subject? We're not going to do reports. Um, yes, we'll do reports. I actually just laid off. I've been working on this quite a bit, but. Other than that, Tracy, I'm going to go to you next.
I have. I should have nothing.
Nothing for me. That one? Charles? All right, continuing business financial.
So in last week's meeting, I, you know, reported out that, uh, Lucian Clark Bank was unable to, willing to, uh, loan us a line of credit or start a line of credit. I've been working with David Obrath from Consulting Services, uh, Special District Association. He's a gentleman I worked with back in two thousand nineteen. And so he's, he's actively working on it right now. I had to send him some information yesterday. So he's, he's out looking for a lending institution to, uh, get a set with a line of credit. I haven't got an update from him this morning. I was hopeful, hopeful that I get a, an update from him, but, um, just double check.
Does he feel positive or?
Huh?
Does he feel?
I don't know. I don't know how to feel, Charles. I'll be very honest with you. I, I don't know. I don't know what we're going to do.
Do we have any money in, in C? It was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's gone?
We have. We don't have cash.
So I think, um, as I asked this before, that a building could be used as collateral?
The bank of Lucian Clark Bank was not willing to do it, even with our building as collateral. Because that's what we had set up with them previously back in several years ago.
So did, has that been mentioned today from SDAO to use it as collateral?
They, they know all the options that they can use too. Yeah.
So where does that leave things here?
In a very bad, in a very bad place.
A very bad place.
Yes. The board's going to need to make a decision today.
On what?
On license to operate or not.
So if we don't operate, I mean, if we say yes, where does that leave things? Can we say yes?
If you say yes, we're not going to operate?
No. If we say yes, we're going to operate.
I don't have a source of money right now to operate.
Deanna?
So it, it seems to me that, uh, it's, we invited correctly and that's why we're aching right now. If we were to get a line of credit, that means that we can function for how many months? How much longer like? Because that would, we would still be owing that money. Then like how do we pay for the credit?
We have to, we have to include that in the budget. You know, if we don't, you know, hopefully, and I don't know how long it takes for David to get that, you know, put together, that package. And I don't remember back in two thousand nineteen. I think it took a few weeks. But if we've already done a budget, then we incurred debt. Then we'd have to do a supplemental budget and make some adjustments in the budget. And this budget is very challenging for next year. I'll tell you right now, there's going to be some very difficult decisions that we're going to have to make as a district, that the board and the budget committee. We have to look at each individual program and make a determination of what we can actually afford with the income that we get to operate.
So when we, I don't know if this is a time to talk about the upcoming budget meeting or should we?
You can't really talk about the budget, um, because that's part of the public process. That's why we have, uh, citizen representatives on the, uh, budget committee. The only thing that you could really do is just kind of generally say, you know, what the board's priorities are for the district. Is it to operate fixed route service and the complimentary paratransit service? Or are there other things that are more important than running buses or more crucial? So that's why we're going to be having a discussion about the programs that we're involved with.
Thank you.
I think Rebecca was next. Okay. Yeah, I was wondering, that was my question is that how we need to work this out? And I'm, I'm wondering, um, other than payroll, is there any way that we can delay any other additional payments or there is, that's not realistic, that there's just.
We don't have cash right now.
Payroll is coming up.
Yeah, next week.
Next one.
So have you talked to creditors saying?
That's what David from his VA was working on. He works with a variety of lending institutions throughout the country.
No, I meant creditors like.
Oh, creditors, no.
Creditors, fuel.
No, we'll have to deal with that also. You know, we, we'll be late on some of our payments. There's no doubt, but we'll, we'll talk with them and let them know the situation.
Charles?
Who's budgeting? Are we required to have a budget meeting next on the tenth?
Well, we just published it, so. I mean, if we have to bump it again, we can.
Just wondering how we deal budgeting with such, such so much fluff.
Yeah, we have to have a budget in place by, process has to be done and adopted by June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
So as it stands right now, where, where I'm at with the budget, in order to have a balanced budget, I have about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars off at this point. And I'm working on the payroll component of it right now. And I'm not doing a general payroll. I'm diving deep into the payroll, person by person. See what our actual cost is going to be for the next fiscal year. But there's other things that will be presented at the budget committee that are drastic in order, that I've already done and I've shared that with the Chair. So she's aware.
Jeff? Karen mentioned something about a grant coming up, a possible grant.
Well, we have the, the stiff discretionary, um, to go to the airport. That's one she was referring to. They didn't pull it, but they put a note on it for the OTC consideration. And that was, I believe that was the indication on the other grants. They haven't pulled any grants. But the grant agreement will change, potentially or possibly. Yeah. But it's, it wouldn't necessarily affect the, the money part of that. It would be process. Correct? As part of the reporting?
It could be more reporting, more oversight, um, but we don't know until we get final results from that.
So we can still do a budget based on the information that we know now. And then if something were to happen where they were to pull, uh, pull a grant, if the OTC says no, we're not going to give them that grant, then we just don't, if we've adopted the budget, we don't even expand that service. Unfortunately, um, we just wouldn't do it.
It'd be, it'd be service specific that it wouldn't be just like one of the programs rewind. We'd pull that as opposed to.
That's just an example. And there's no indication, you know, they didn't, they didn't change our stiff formula plan for next, next biennium either. So that, that was reassuring for me.
Pamela?
So when people getting paid are not next Friday?
Pardon?
Or people are, people getting paid or not next Friday?
We will have an issue if we don't get a line of credit set up by.
Is there any way to use, uh, ODOT's conditions?
No.
To get even a loan for just the, uh, payroll for Friday?
They've said no more money.
Period.
Period, right. Until after the audit.
I'm concerned about, um, us being prepared for that audit. You know, Kelly, you're saying that, you know, AccuFund is, you're trying to get data out of that and that seems to be pretty important.
Let me, let me back up just a little bit. Let me, let me back up just a little bit, you know, because the, the team that was here, Drew specifically, I was working with him, he's got a great financial background. He's worked with a lot of different software. I was able to get into AccuFund, and then he and I were kind of trying to navigate it a little bit. We're very successful, but with Kelly being back, she can get that information. She's already got a lot of the information that they wanted while they were on site, and that's what I'll be sending to Drew today, which will help them. But that's the only software we have, so. One way or another, we'll get it out of there.
Do we have to pay?
AccuFund?
Yeah.
Yeah, we pay a quarter lease. Fifty-three hundred a quarter.
I mean, is there something, is there something in the contract that says this doesn't work, we don't pay you until it's fixed?
I'd have to go back and look to get greater. I thought anyone that?
Pardon?
Left out of Bend, it would sign off or something like that.
Well, we signed off on it.
Okay. See, new, new business?
David.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Tracy. Tracy.
I just have a couple of questions, so. If, so if we suspend operations, are there additional costs that we're gonna have to shut us down?
I don't know that there'd be any additional cost beyond the normal, but it would mean we're furloughing all the employees. I don't want to do a layoff. I'm recommending that we do a furlough, so we can call them back as soon as we get the funding in place. Or a line of credit set up.
Yeah, so the furlough would be behind you, okay.
And that's what we did with a couple of the employees during the pandemic. Now, we, we continued to pay everybody, but then, and these, you know, drivers, we kept, we kept the buses on the road during the pandemic, but we didn't have a transit center, the train stopped and shut down. And so we ended up having to furlough a couple of employees for like a month.
I think Rebecca was next.
Okay. My concern also is public relations and that we have a a strong, quick, transparent communication to the community about this. And I think that's very important. So I, I'd like to ask how we're going to do that.
You know, as far as the process, the team was talking about it last week prior to the board not wanting to shut down, and we'd already started identifying what we need to do, what steps we need to take from, seeing the furlough letters, Mary posting the shutdown, all the shelters and all the places that we need to do outreach, all the community partners we deal with, National Community Action, DHS, all those different organizations that we get ahold of to let them know. And so they've started that. I know Mary's got a list that she was writing. We'd have to continue on that.
Yeah, I, I really think that, you know, immediately after the article ran last week, the Daily Astoria, and there was a lot of misinformation swirling around. You know, people probably not taking the time to read through the article. But you know, that is, you know, the human condition. But I think it needs to be, I think how that, this next communication is expressed is going to make a big impact on whether or not people can understand this and dispel any disinformation. I think it's very important.
We're gonna be, we're gonna be very honest with them. Here's what it is.
And, and I should, Jeff also, but, and I heard some of the same things that Rebecca heard, but I also heard from quite a few of the business people, and they completely understood. So they, 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 they got it, so they, they already are.
Yeah, but I'm not concerned about businesses, I'm concerned about our writers.
And I agree with that.
That need us, not just want us, but need us.
Emma?
I'll be really honest, go ahead.
What does the furlough exactly mean?
It means they're, they're still active employees, but they're just not working.
Okay.
Not getting paid.
How about this? Okay, that some, the bus drivers stayed working, you know, there's no money, and that the furlough will actually, that we would pay them back.
We can't do that.
You can't do it?
No.
Illegal.
Illegal?
Absolutely illegal.
Okay, this is really off the rocket here. Is there money in the union that could hold them over?
If they're furloughed, they can draw unemployment without?
Well, they can. But if, I mean, this will destroy a lot of work of what has been done here, and the writers suffer from this, and the employees. I mean, they're, I, it doesn't seem like we have a backup. I mean, ODOT does technical, the bank said, well, the bank said what it said. And so the SDAO should have come in sooner, then we could have more time to work on this. But, so, is there a way to delay this decision until Dave comes up?
No.
No? Because you have nothing?
The board is gonna need to make the decision today.
If we decide to, and then Dave finds funds, do we meet again to?
No, I can start service up.
You know, if we decide?
The board would have to meet to approve the financing test, what we can put together.
So you still find out today, tomorrow, you still find out today or tomorrow?
Possibly, I don't know if.
So if Dave finds money, how fast can the furlough end?
Well, the board would have to meet to approve it, and then, once it's signed, we would have probably immediate access to the money.
Then there's no federal emergency money?
That would take it back to Congress.
Somebody else to?
I was gonna say that when I came to work here in 2010, we went through the same kind of situation drastically. And David Olbrich was looking for SEO at that time. And if anybody can find us funding, he can't. He's been doing this for a long time. Very well-known professional in banking, so if he, if he, if he's about the best you can get.
And when was he contacted? When was he contacted?
I didn't, I didn't have contact.
That was last week, after the board.
I think it was Tuesday, wasn't it? A week ago, Tuesday, a week ago Tuesday?
We moved back to DC last week.
So we're just forced to close the disaster sale, because there's no money.
Or take the chance.
Or take the chance, and what does that chance mean?
And I would not be able to recommend.
I'm not gonna take a chance on our employees. That's just not fair. How hard would it be to, you know, ramp up again once we get the funding for that?
Jennifer? I think it will jump right back in, won't it?
I don't think so. Drivers are there. We already have a handful that we're planning on retiring. If we close, they will come back. We might find seven to run service, but I don't know if we could do a full, full service that we have on the road.
So they take a while to ramp up.
So if we could have a partial service, again, based on staffing?
Is there any recommendation we can make to writers where to go?
Something else?
We're it.
And we're it?
Well, I'd, I'd like to just follow that thread one more time, is prioritizing the routes based on, I mean, would it be the routes that have the largest ridership that we would bring back?
Yeah, maybe, maybe we'll look at, like, let's just say Route 101, for instance, north and south route. We brought it back, maybe we don't run it this late in the evening, maybe we're gonna run it a little later in the morning. We could look at those kinds of options too, just to start. Based on driver visibility.
And if we are, when we get this, whatever, you know, contingency monies from ODOT, whatever source, will this be enough to hold us together until additional monies or grant monies become available?
Was it your motion, Charles, a million?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that would sustain us?
One of the things with stiff formula, you know, Karen said, you know, I'll let you guys know that, we've reached our maximum allocation for this period, for this biennium. July 1st is the new biennium. Now, we didn't get two quarters of stiff income. And so ODOT is holding onto those funds, that would be able to be released in July. If, but I think that's gonna be contingent on the, the audit and the correct action. You know, they may decide they wanna hold that a little longer until we have that in a row.
Have we, have you spoken with all of your leadership team and gotten all the input that they would like to provide you or?
I'm sure they have plenty more.
I would like, I think that's very important.
We met before the board met last week. I didn't want them to be blindsided at the beginning, so I,
So that they can help part in how to piece this stuff together then?
Yeah.
Prior, as the priority.
Anything else?
One last thing. I guess if we got the full, say, we got the finished outline of credit, for example, would that get us to July and the funding? That would get us to July when the funding would be coming. The money normally come first of July, or that's in the July, August, or July?
The payment's generally in front of the, to the agencies by the 15th of the month, so.
But no, maybe it would be?
Would get us to July.
Emma?
Would, can you use the building to get ODOT money now as collateral?
No. ODOT's not a lending institution. They won't. They have to follow their regulations.
No government agency is.
Pardon?
No government agency is a lending institution. It wouldn't do that.
And, and so can we wait till we hear from David or not?
No.
No.
Okay.
I would, I would recommend that we shut it down effective Saturday. That gives us Friday. Tell about the writers now.
This Saturday? This Saturday or the following?
Shut down Saturday.
Is that the payroll, payroll? And payroll cycle ends?
Saturday is the last day.
Okay, I see. So you're trying not to get into the next payroll.
So you would run through Saturday?
No, we'd run through Friday.
Just run through Friday.
Now, if you hear, if you hear from David today, and we, and we make some decision now, we have an emergency meeting to undo, or did, or how does that work?
We have to give 24-hour notice to get you back together. And it could be a quick virtual meeting. And I, you'd get loan documents, you would get the, you would see the loan documents, and you'd need to approve that, not through a board chair to sign it.
And that, those funds will come pretty much immediately once you sign it?
I would think, yes. We would have access to that.
Well, I'll speak for myself. I'll come at night or on the weekend. I mean, if you have a midnight meeting, I'll be there. But you're actually, there's no choice except the date that we close. That's what I hear.
We're just buying a day, right?
I think it's just tomorrow that we can let everybody know.
Let me ask one more idiotic question, desperation here. If David finds something, but it can't all be consolidated, like, you know, before Saturday, can we, can we continue operations?
If, if I could get a service, then we could get those funds by Wednesday, Thursday, at the very latest, then we wouldn't have to shut down. But I don't know if he can.
But we have, so there's more than just Saturday, I mean, just Friday. We have a little leeway till Wednesday.
If, if there's a commitment from a lending institution, then?
Okay, so the question is that, can we keep it open till Wednesday?
So you have to do payroll?
I don't know. I don't think so.
So you have to do payroll?
Then people will be plenty working without paying.
And, and we don't have anything in place yet?
Yes.
If, what I'm hearing, if David calls Jeff tomorrow, I've got a bank, it's gonna take us two days to get the paperwork ready to go Tuesday, then we can stay open.
So we would put our employees on furlough for three days or two days?
I don't think I'm even gonna have to do that.
We're gonna have to do it.
Cut checks, so?
If he gets a phone call from David tomorrow, papers will be ready to sign on Wednesday.
Which would be the second.
We could meet on Monday, sign the papers. On Wednesday, people could keep on working, right?
That'd be good.
And if, and if?
If the phone call came in tomorrow.
If it came in, yes.
And so we have no large funds that will come in, like timber revenue or property taxes, or anything like that?
No.
Not enough?
No.
I, you know, if we hold off on the decision today, then that does mean that one of two scenarios, we're gonna have to meet again tomorrow to shut it down if you do not hear from David, that, that we?
Process-wise, it would be much easier to make the decision today, so we can effectively get the word out tomorrow.
Okay. It's, it doesn't, it seems like a uphill battle to, to wait. It wouldn't serve us very well.
Yeah, like, yeah, Astoria, the next print comes out until Saturday. So Ethan, I'm sure will have the article done, and it'll probably be on their webpage by tomorrow.
So we'll probably lose, from what Jennifer said, lose drivers because of this?
We very well be losing drivers, yeah.
So the date that we're setting would be our, like, our last day of service for now would be tomorrow, April 20th? And we would be paying our staff this week?
Part of this week.
Like what they work this week? We would pay them the next Tuesday, next Friday?
Next Friday.
Next Friday, so we will be paying them for a week of work.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
That's two weeks.
You can get them every two weeks.
Second day every two weeks.
And how, how early can they apply for unemployment?
They get a furlough letter. They could turn a letter today.
Monday?
They could, they could go today.
Question for Sue, or comment, is that if we have pending applicants, you know, or do you have, what, what would that spell out, where we, you would just drop those?
We don't have any pending transportation support specialists on Monday, so, yeah.
Okay, so like driver candidates right now, you don't have any?
No, not at this point.
Shall we move on to new business?
So the compliance review, I put the last, report from the last time we got a compliance review. This is something that is done every three years for every, every agency. It's a rural agency that is under the guise of ODOT's oversight. Direct recipients, like, you know, big urban systems, they get their triennial review done directly with the FTA. But the state, ODOT oversees us, and so the rural agencies have to have ours every three years. And they come in for a couple of days, RLS and Associates is the organization that does the compliance review. They are great to work with. We're fortunate that we have Richard Gerardi coming to this one, and he was the first one I dealt with after I got hired a couple of years ago. He is, in my opinion, the smartest man in transit in the entire country. If Chris doesn't know, then nobody knows the answer to the question, he's, he's that good. And the other thing that goes along with the compliance review is because RLS is under contract with ODOT, they're available for us to pick up the phone and call and ask questions. You know, ODOT encourages that, so it's a, it's a great resource for transit agencies. So that'll be coming up. I don't know if there'll be any board involvement, or if anyone who's on site, talk to the chair or president, I don't know, we'll find out. Especially with, if they've coordinated with the, the audit, if they have to do. That's just FYI. Once we get to a board back, then we have to show what corrective action, when we're going to have corrective actions on the finding.
We have a date for that, was it the?
The 15th, he'll be on site the 15th and 16th. Let me go to you.
Right after you.
Yeah, so John gets it easier after us.
Excuse me, don't we have to vote on this on the closure?
We're still thinking about it.
I'm thinking.
We're not ready.
Okay.
I might, before, before we need to vote, I might recommend that we take a break.
Oh, yeah.
And allow me to.
No, as planned, I'm doing a break before executive session anyway, so if we get down to executive session, we're close to that.
Can you, can, can, this is something, maybe you could just, maybe have something. A contentious, restart of contingency plan. If we have to shut down. If you, you will have, how do we start back up if we, if we defer or if we write? And I guess you need to know immediately who's not coming back, right? And so, I, do we have some sort of plans to know who's coming back? You'll know what the year is, because I'd be curious who's coming back and who's not. I mean, your staff.
We have to bring him back, we'll bring him back in order of seniority. So we'll just go down the phone tree, down the seniority list and try to call and make calls.
You have an exceptional staff, I don't, I don't want to put him on, 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 on the, on the spot. But get them all back, I mean, that's, that's, those are the ones you guys are going to run things, so. I'd like to get you all back, but again, ask you to hang around waiting on us.
Kind of sounds like Jennifer, I have an idea of who may not.
We have a driver that's going to retire at the end of May.
But nothing from your staff, from, from, from your staff.
All staff, no, not that I know of.
We want you guys back, if we have to, so we don't want you to wait around or not, but we sort of want you to come back, so.
Correspondence, we have a letter from a writer.
Yeah, I just wanted to include that in, because that was a, that was a tough day, you know, after, after the last week meeting and the word got out, and it was just, I just wanted to put that in there. It made my day, made Mary's day.
Executive directors report.
All right. Just an update on Tuesday, yesterday, and then before yesterday, yesterday? Day before yesterday, lock on training.
Before.
Same before yesterday, I lost track of time. Went really well, we had two sessions, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, I know that Debbie was the one in the afternoon, I don't know if anybody else was able to. But the, the type of lock zone that we'll be using is the, the kind that's, the NRCAN that's used in the nose, so it's very, very easy. And I think it was well received by, by the drivers and everybody, a lot of the drivers have been looking forward to this, having it available, so we can respond in case of emergency. So we're excited, Sue's just about done with the policies, I've got one more thing I'm going to get with her on, I want her to adjust in the policy after the meeting today. And she'll have it in place, and once it's in place, then we can, we'll, we'll start the program. And we'll have the NRCAN on the buses and at the, at the transit center itself. Really easy to do, that's what's, that's what the greatest thing is, so.
Is there medication provided by public health?
Public health has given us 25 bucks. Two days is a week box. Great partnership, it's, we're really, we're really fortunate, because the, the new director of public health, Jean Jane, is a transit guy. And he, he loves our transit system. And where he was at in New York, it wasn't a good system, so. And, and he liked the fact that we were going to be going to the airport at some point, so. That's a big deal for him, so he doesn't, doesn't have to maneuver on the mat's train, so he goes back home. That was the biggest update from what I, what I wrote in the my report. You know, ridership, we're still showing grade increases, March, we were up 19%. Year to date, we're up 11%, so some good selling numbers. That Run to Portland, still huge, 52% increase last month, so, just tremendous. 101 was up 22%. Warrington was down a little bit on the, on, on, on the weekends, and I, I'm not sure why, but I don't think you'll see that trend that big too much. But Route 10 in Astoria is really strong with a 32% increase, so, good numbers. Any questions for me?
Last month, you said that the marketing grant had expired. And then, now you're saying we, we have it, so what, what is, what is it? You said, it says marketing plan receive grant, and last month you said.
We were awarded the grant, we didn't, we didn't, ended up doing the program. We didn't do a marketing program.
Okay. And just as, and you also said, because there is a loss of drivers, not a loss, there weren't that many drivers, but in the future, a marketing plan can be beyond drivers. Okay, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay. Leadership team reports. Jennifer, you will start.
It's been an emotional week, and I wasn't expecting to hear what I heard today, so just try to stay professional. So it's been a busy, busy month. I would like to add to my board report that one of our supervisors who's in charge of the head signs and emanciators is working on Hanover to have Spanish, English announced and across the reading board inside the buses, so it's exciting to see that technology, he's working out for our vehicles and riding the bus and making sure that it's emancipating at the correct time. It's not as easy as we would think it was, you have to make a geofence and make it announced correctly. So he's been working on that, so that's exciting. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add to my report, you have any questions?
I do. At the bottom, when you talk about the Tom Point Job Corps, starting, like, working on the cement slabs, is that a program that they're doing? Is it a collaboration, a contract? And what is this?
So in the past, Tom Point has come, used their students for on-the-job training, and, and then they work with our staff and just set up the shelters with, with COVID, and then they got, you know, they were shut down, so they're bringing back their students, they're still in lockdown, so they're working through their process on, on campus. They have, so the classroom, the teacher, he's working with all the, the cement class teacher, the buildings, you know, all those different classes, and they're working with the students. They'll come out, they have never laid cement for us, the cost is only materials. And then it goes to kids, the students, sorry, classroom experience, those hours at technical.
And they get some credit for that?
I believe so, yeah.
Cool.
They are looking for community jobs, whatever that looks like, those projects, they put in ramps for personal, you know, local people, so they are excited to do this project, lay cement, like, put up the shelters, which are a different style shelter than we have currently in our community, so we ourselves, also staff is, you know, working through that process, they're a much heavier duty. Want to figure out, you have to rent a lift to put the roof on, they have the glass installed, that's what makes it a little tricky. But they're all excited to work together. Get that sort of sunset beach shelter put up, it's a much needed. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
I just have one question.
Sorry.
Have you approached them in terms of having them apply for a bus driver job? Or mentioning?
To Tom Point students?
Yeah. When they graduate, you know, what the process would be if they're interested?
Sue, you've been on that committee, haven't you?
I have, I didn't, I missed the last meeting, but, yeah, I mean, I can reach out to Tom Point and talk to them about that when we are back in service.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
And Nicole?
Nicole is online, she's managing paratransit by herself, so I don't know if she's available. I haven't given her a click on, so Jennifer could probably answer any questions she may have.
Anybody have any questions for Nicole, that maybe Jennifer could answer?
So Nicole manages the Ride Assist, the curb-to-curb paratransit Medicaid, we do transportation for Northwest Rides.
She's probably busy there.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, there she is, oh, there she is.
Good morning.
Morning.
Sorry, I was on a call.
Sorry, anybody have any questions for Nicole?
I think it's Nicole and Jason's question, the interface with, about the veterans and the rides, and, you know, I think you guys know that my husband is a driver, a vet's driver. And they're probably, you guys, I'm sure you have a process to determine whether or not vets can be riders, or if they need maybe special medical service, right? Where, you know, they, they really couldn't, you know, be helped by a paraprofessional to, like my husband, you know, to get in his big truck, get up into his big truck. And, you know, I saw, I, can you explain a little bit about how you determine, you know, what riders need, where they, if they are vets, could they, you know, how do you determine what kind of ride that would be appropriate for them?
Yeah. I'll go take this, Nicole, so within the veteran program, you know, if a driver shows up, we don't, we don't really know upfront, you know, whether or not a veteran is going to be between a particular type of, you know, mobility challenge or whatever, but when our drivers go pick him up, and they indicate, you know, I'm not comfortable driving this person because of these reasons, usually I'll call up the veteran and I'll talk to them. Do have an assessment with them over the phone, it's, it's really difficult to kind of go out to them and talk to them about those specific things, but we do work with paratransit, so we have the two veteran volunteer drivers, but Ride Assist is like another provider for us, and they'll fill in any gaps that we have in, in serving a veteran. So when we come to a case of a veteran that is perhaps should not be going with our two current drivers that we have for, can't get into the vehicle that the veterans have, or the volunteers have, or whatever, then we'll go ahead and pass that along to Ride Assist, we haven't had to do that very often, but in this particular one case, I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to, perhaps, we do have a gentleman that we are working through the system to get him to Ride Assist, and so he would have a ramp to get up into the vehicle, so the reality is, is, is Ride Assist, you know, system, you know, they're not designed to crutch the individual, I mean, they're designed to move mobility devices and, and, and help individuals get up via the ramps and lifts and all that kind of stuff, so. Can do a great job of that, and we hope that this veteran that does need that little extra assistance, we'll get it soon.
Yeah, okay, you know, because I saw that from the other side of it, from the provider's side, you know, for, from the veteran ride driver, and it was a, a little bit wonky, because, you know, I, it seems like it would be better if you did talk to the vet and, and determine what kind of need mobility, you know, and, and how they, you know, what their mobility status was, so that you could determine before that, that driver engages and then has an unsuccessful experience, so.
We, we do that with every veteran who calls.
Okay, so they,
Oh, that's, that's.
You have, you go through a criteria, how they're able.
This veteran went through that, he uses a cane, and, you know, we can't really get into what level of disability he has, he uses a cane, and we even asked a question about cognitive disability and stuff, he's not, so, but in real time, I'm.
Okay, I guess it is just really, it isn't just a, there's a little bit of wiggle in, in this, so you, you kind of go back and forth a little bit in order to determine how best for us to serve
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of variable time and challenges you need to go through successfully, you're a veteran.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Nicole, also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Jason?
Yeah, I did put in March, so this report is about what happened in March, but, anyway, early April, we did a, just want to highlight Warrington and Seaside High School, I worked with two really cool groups, one from each school, took them out on a bus, and thank you, Jennifer, very much for setting up, her team setting up the bus for us to go out and pick this team up and go out and do a big travel training, we did simplified routes, and you know, it, 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 there are, working on a proxy of eight future one-on-one travel trains and a really cool potential job shadow, I did, the teachers are really excited for, so. That's what happened on my report, is there's any questions?
Yep. Okay, thank you, Jason. And Kathy?
Yep, you've got my report in front of you. March was a full month full of a lot of outreach and community contact. Um, been doing the Risk University Training, which has been very valuable and has held a lot of important information that potentially, I think that, you know, might interest the board going forward. This has been a gut punch meeting, so last week was a gut punch, all week, all we heard was everything was fine, everything's been fixed. Don't worry, it's all okay. And that was through the grapevine, no direct communication. And that was through the grapevine, no direct communication. So to hear this today is a gut punch, so it's important that you know that, thank you. And if you have any questions?
No questions for Kathy? Thank you, Kathy. Mary?
Any questions? Thank you.
And Sue?
Well, this timing isn't really the best, I have vacation tomorrow and Monday. However, I will probably delay my vacation until at least noon, but I am leaving, because I have, uh, things set up. So I did hear from Debbie Newton at the, um, employment office, she reached out, I was thrilled, because when I had an employee call, I was kind of left unprepared, because somebody said to me, Sue, do they even teach, um, what do you call it, do they even teach furlough in your, and it's like, no, not really. So anyway, um, I've had layoffs and things like that, but I've, and I had the furlough, but we knew it was just a, a, you know, a month that we were gonna lay the transit staff off. So anyway, I have a lot of resources, uh, or a lot of information to share with our employees in the letter. Um, and, um, furlough, unemployment lasts for twenty-six weeks, would take employees through November twenty, um, uh, fifth, you know, if, if it goes that long, uh, the maximum unemployment available to save is six hundred and seventy-eight dollars per week, but that is all dependent upon your salary, you know, what you, what you make in a normal work week. So anyway, um, I guess the one big question that I'm gonna have is, um, medical benefits, uh, that type of thing. And I know that if we have zero money, that, you know, that's not gonna be something that we're probably going to be able to afford them. And so I know that, um, we can go on the Oregon Health Plan, um, you know, everybody's gonna have to apply. So, um, I will be giving all of our employees, Debbie's, you know, the numbers and everything, and she's gonna have, have everyone call her, and, and she will work directly, but, you know, they will work directly with us, so. Um, I feel much better than I did last week, um, and especially when the employee called, and I really didn't have a bunch of, uh, information to give them at that point, however, I would have been on the phone the very next day and getting all of that information. So, anyway. Anybody have any questions?
I just had a comment about, um, for when we get back to doing these sorts of things, is, um, refreshing connections with the Classic Community College. Um, you know, they have a workforce development department. And now's not the time to talk about it substantively, but, you know, that, that is one of their objectives, is that they're supposed to serve the community in terms of, you know, um, programming and customized, uh, training. Um, and I'm thinking, you know, how we can steer people towards employment here at the district by way of, you know, something intentional, a, a partnership with the college. And I, I may, that may have already be in existence, but it would be worthy of us re, revisiting.
Are you talking about Kevin Play and his group down that?
Well, that's the Small Business Development Center, and certainly, you know, drawing in other businesses, uh, is a great idea. But, you know, I'm talking about specifically, you know, the, the, um, Department of Construction.
Okay.
And brainstorming with them about what we can, what our needs are. You know, that's the role of a community college, and, uh, you know, how they might, you know, in their, uh, long-term planning or whatever, they, they need to, you know, look at what we might need in terms of training. I know they do the CDL in conjunction with Telma, uh, Community College. So, you know, this is something that I, I'd like to see us maybe get on a, uh, you know, on a work session or something and, and be able to have a representative from the college come and talk with us at some point.
And if the HR department isn't cut, then yes.
If the what?
Isn't cut.
Oh, yeah, well, like I said, this was on my list last night when I was reviewing the, your, your page, and I, I'm just sharing that with, with all of us today about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, but I do wanna assure you that, um, I will be there for the employees, whatever they need, and the district. I mean, there will be forms to fill out and everything like that, so, um, and those need to be filled out promptly, and, anyway, so I will do whatever, um, needs to be done, but I'm hoping that I can still go on this little vacation. So, anyway, all right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Susan. So we're to the executive session, and we'll take fifteen minute break. We will now adjourn to executive session to review and evaluate job performance of our chief executive officer. Um, if the person whose performance is being reviewed and evaluated does not request an open hearing, which she did not, for ORS one nine two six six zero.
Okay, I'm gonna stop and start pressing media, we can't record.
I'm sorry.